So, is there anything worth to say that we care to repeat to him?
Yeah, I mean, this is a project that's received preliminary approval. It's an eighteen lot residential subdivision. This is South Church. The apartment buildings are right here. This corner right here on the other side is the corner of the...
Cemetery.
Slade Hill Cemetery. We received preliminary approval in the review process. One of the conversations that we had was sidewalks. Now, there's really, there's a little strip of sidewalk in front of the apartments here. Then it's blanked. And then there's another section of like bluestone sidewalk over across the street. And then there's none until you get to the corner. And then there's no sidewalks along this side, on the south side of the South Street.
Is it a cemetery there or what?
No.
Our cemetery or...
Let's all have one second. I'll put you to work there.
Steve, how you doing?
Good, how you doing?
Good, good, man.
Alright, Steve, you at the floor?
Okay, just to open back up. This is a, this is a proposed residential subdivision. Old York is the name of it. If you're going out, Old Chester Road or South Street, this is South Street right here. This, the, right here across the street from us is the corner of, this actually is property line right here. This is the corner of Slade Hill Cemetery. This is the cemetery over here. The small apartment buildings, a couple apartment buildings are right here across the street from us. There's two existing dwellings and then this is part of the site. And then this is the corner with the door. Well, part of the, part of the things that we looked at were sidewalks and, you know, where's the lawn? How many should we have? So, down to the, at the eleventh hour, we all agreed on how our sidewalks were going to be. We're going to put them in the exterior of, of the lots, not in the interior. And then bring them out to South Church Street. There's no sidewalks out there, so we're really going to bring sidewalks nowhere. But, you know, we think it's appropriate to have sidewalks because of large scale. You know, nobody, the applicant isn't trying to get out of it. But one of the board members asked us to come and talk to the village board about possibly...
One of the planning board members.
Well, the planning board, I'm sorry. Asked us to come and talk to the village board about possibly doing a, instead of doing, making a contribution, you know, with lieu of putting these sidewalks in, making a contribution to do sidewalks someplace else if there were a need for it. So, you know, I'm unaware of any sidewalk plan. I don't, probably it couldn't be your time. It wasn't, they, you know, they won't work on anything for community guys. So, I'm here just to talk about it, you know, concept, you know. I don't know if there's any interest.
Essentially, just quickly, but while you're saying, as of now, you're going to put sidewalks in around the perimeter of the street?
Right.
However, if there's somewhere else in the village where having sidewalks would be more utility, would be a better thing overall, you guys could fund them being put in somewhere else instead of there.
Right, so if you spend any money here, you can spend it someplace else.
And the planning board, basically, based on what they said, they'd be in favor of that?
If there were some, you know, if there were a plan.
Right, they're probably looking for some direction from us, I think.
Right.
They want to talk as well, so we'll probably bring them in, a work session, probably.
I mean, I know there's a couple other act, but there was some discussion about, I guess, the quick check on the North Collector Road. You know, so I don't know. Like, the condition of our approval was to come and talk to you about this.
Well, there's two things that jump out at me right away. There is no plan for any sidewalks anywhere that I'm aware of. And there are, unfortunately, through, you know, no fault of anybody involved in the planning board or here now, there are an awful lot of places, you know, Still Acres, Zupper Murray Avenue. You can pick a lot of places where there are no sidewalks. So, it wouldn't make any sense to put sidewalks in somewhere that were unconnected to anywhere else. What would be the point of having sidewalks go to nowhere? So, I think we would have to come up with an idea of somewhere where we'd have a sidewalk that would have some utility. I mean, you're talking about basically putting sidewalks on the road within the development area.
Yeah, and you get out to here where the kids can, we also discussed, it does a show on cable, we're going to make like a little concrete platform, a little bigger, so there's places...
Bus stop.
Bus stop, yeah, so the kids can sit or stand.
I mean, all the research that you do about, you know, strong, vibrant downtown communities is they need to be walkable. So, from my perspective, if the funds are available to help the walkability of downtown or other areas within the village more towards the center, I think that'd be a positive thing. I like the idea in theory. Really just looking for tonight to just see where our heads are, if we're looking to...
Yeah, we're, just to let you, we're at the reg, we have preliminary approval from the planning board. We're at the regulatory agencies, we're at the health department, you know, and the DUC. You know, we're shooting, hopefully start construction in the spring.
Well, in fairness too, as a condition of the planning board that you come and talk to. Not that you don't like us or anything, obviously. How big are the lots here, roughly?
Uh, the minimum lot size in this zone is fifteen thousand square feet. So, they're roughly about half acre. A couple are a little bigger, but they got the lead ends in the back, so.
I mean, I would say that a lot of, or, you know, the potential of the residents in there would probably not want a sidewalk. And just rather have a curb because you're taking away some of their property. And generally thoroughfares through here are wide enough so that you can, you know, park a car on either side of the street, still walk down the street, not be in danger of getting hit, you know, the width of the street.
This is going to be a hot track area.
No, it's a little weird. And so, I mean, to me, if I, I know if I was going to purchase a home in here, I probably wouldn't be all enthusiastic about having a sidewalk running across my property and separating five or eight feet of my lawn from the, from the street.
Plus you have to shovel there to maintain all that.
And, so.
That was just in my favor of finding somewhere more useful to lay a sidewalk for us. You know, where, you know, your client, you.
Yeah, and I mean, this is, this is really on the perimeter of a walkable place. A lot of people aren't going to walk from, you know, for somebody like me, that's not a big deal. But a lot of people might think that that was a fair piece to walk if you're going all the way downtown. They're going to get in their car.
It's neither here nor there in this conversation, but in the middle and the front there, is that more like parkland or is that more wooded areas with the green, with the dark green areas?
Yeah, the whole, the whole site is wooded right now.
Right, in the middle there and in the front where it's dark green.
Usually tree areas are where we keep the trees.
Okay. That's great. I think it's partially the boards in favor of the concept.
Yeah, well, if we can identify some places with art, I mean, you say, you know, the spring.
Well, and I think...
Plus we have some idea for you by land.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
I mean, I have a couple of suggestions if anybody's interested.
Okay, sure.
I think along, you know, my offices, there's no sidewalk in front of my office. You have the sidewalk that comes from, that they did when they did, redid the entry, the exit on Twenty Fourth. During that, in that project, they brought sidewalk up to Joel's house, that is in Derrymore. And for whatever reason, it stopped, I think, right at your driveway, right? Or past your driveway, somewhere around there. So, you've got this sidewalk that connects to the, to the CBS Plaza. And then in front of our building, where for a reason there was never a sidewalk put in. And then when you go beyond ours, there's some sidewalk that's old bluestone. It really needs to be reset or redone, you know, it's pretty, pretty poor shape. So, there's a whole stretch, and I tell you, a lot of people from downtown walk along that stretch of road to get to...
You see them in the street?
At CBS, right, and they usually pop out on the street in front of our building and like where Matthew Seines used to be, you know, like that area. So, I mean, that's a, that's a section that gets pretty high, high traffic and get, you know, so that's one of the pushing way one, too.
Putting your, where we're school board at now, are there any areas that the school district has looked at in the past? If that's something you can get into?
Yeah, it's, well, you know, a lot of people...
I want to open a can of worms, so.
Yeah, there's a couple of cans you probably, I prefer not to open up. Intermediate school in particular, only because of grades, you can't get into, you know, so.
It's funny, I mean, there is a sidewalk on the other side of the street. I know the Doyle people used to come here a lot. For years, George McGinnis used to come here and complain about the other side of Murray Avenue. There's no sidewalk from that tennis court, you know, down.
Right.
It ends about halfway down Murray Avenue and then it... So, you would be able to connect to there to...
Right, for whatever, it didn't link in every two, on that same, on the same side of this, you know, that side of the street goes like three quarters of the way up and it just stops.
Whatever we do, I want it to be an educated decision where we put the funds in the best place possible. What if it takes some time to determine that? I don't want your, this project to get held up as a result. Is this independent of the other regulatory agencies that you're meeting on at this point? Or do you need to have determination on this before things move forward?
Um, no, I mean, you know, our, our, we're lucky, except we're looking to start in the spring. So, I mean, when we get in there, we'll, we will like to have this resolved.
Well, yeah, I'm not saying months after that.
Yeah, sidewalks or no sidewalks, you know. So, and we're, you know, we're more than happy to build the sidewalks, you know, on site. And more than happy to make a contribution whatever works best for the village, so.
Okay, I think this, and I'm looking at board ideas, I think this might be a good start to a joint meeting with us and the planning board to kind of get their thoughts and areas they've looked at. And maybe take this concept and apply it to a larger policy when there is new development, you know, putting funds in certain areas for sidewalks that might not be applicable in that area. So, I think the direction I'd like to go on is set up a joint meeting unless the planning board for our next work session. I don't open another board, the concept right now.
Steve, I mean, really what you need to know from us, the suit around there, obviously, is we would want to take you up on your offer, get on to a DLS, you're going to lay X dollars...
X number of dollars, right.
...up doing this and maybe, you know, even on the site later, so to speak. Right, right, okay. And then, you know, because my client doesn't have the ability to do capital improvements on other people's land. So, I mean, it's either, you know, in village right the way is, you know, which you can do with it. Or if it's on private property, we at least have to get, you know, releases from that, from those apartments.
Okay.
Do you think that we really need to have a joint meeting? Or is it something that we can give you the authority to go ahead and just interact with the chair?
Yeah, I mean, I can go to one of their relay arms or message to it.
Well, I don't even think you'd have to go to a meeting with them. I mean, it's something that could be emailed or talked about.
Sure.
I don't, I don't, I mean, unless we've got other issues that we've got a long way to put together, I wouldn't waste their time to go to...
Just to say yes, agree.
To say, you know, we agree, it's in fact, we agree.
Maybe you're going to list for us, then we will probably talk to ours, like that's a question area. But we fast forward, you know, what kind of money we'll be looking at. So, we can also then determine, or we can best spend those funds. Give us some parameters of what you would, what you can do for us in terms of that. I know that all of us have like a better ask, like where.
Alright, what others, I'll call Jared O'Donnell. I'll talk to him, find out where they're at, if they have any ideas about places. I'm meeting with David tomorrow, so we'll talk to him a little bit. And then we should be able to move on it fairly quickly, I think.
Yeah, I think Mike Nudley's going to have some, you know, heading, if there's any complaints. No, I'm sure he knows, yeah.
So, this is the final frontier of the village.
That's it, we're on the cut edge right there.
We're, uh, building it out.
Yeah, so we're, and this is just, these are, this is, you know, the applicant is Michael Walker and Roger Moxer who's in the back did, uh, you know, the heritage show.
We've met them once or twice.
Twice, yeah, and then they're, you know, they did Carriage Park up on the corner, which is now Bill's Place. Yeah, by Bill Murray's.
Is that place all full now?
Hundred percent. Two school kids.
And all the cars are underneath, I never see a car.
You see, well, what, just a handful?
I mean...
Really all of them by the outside?
Yeah, it's walking up by the...
Yeah. Yeah, they're knock out there.
I mean, really, it's, you know, a great, great project.
So, they handle side of it? It's alright.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Talk to you soon.
Hey, now, just, you know, not get here enough, but thanks for everything you guys did the last couple of weeks, a little bit, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe too special. I'll see you later.
Alright, thanks. Alright, next on the agenda, I just have Murray Avenue parking. See if we have any board feedback from the public hearing to kind of guide our future actions. And basically, you know, there's, we have a few options. We can just pass the local law as presented with no parking twenty-four seven on that side of Murray Avenue, on that, on that section of it. Or we can make some kind of adjustment based on the public comment in terms of, you know, reducing the hours that it's there. We can, four options, I guess. We can do nothing and just leave it the way it is. Or some other kind of creative solution that might come to mind. So, I'm open to any board feedback that anyone might have on that.
Based on what I saw from all the public comments, I don't know that there was really compelling reason to do it. Been that for forever. The only thing I thought that made a lot of sense to me when I heard several of the residents talk about the top of the hill there and the issues.
The crest in the middle there?
Yeah, the issue brought up about the fact that that's dangerous if somebody parks, you know, a truck or something there and the people can't get by. So, I could see putting some no parking zones in that area. I don't know that it's necessary to make a no parking zone all the way down that street. I just haven't been convinced that that makes sense yet.
But you definitely have to address the crest, there's no question about it. And I've been around that road multiple, multiple times a day, seven days a week. And I can tell you on the weekends, it's just as bad during the week. And at all hours, and it's, you know...
Meaning there's more cars during the weekend?
Possibly even more during the weekend, you know. My, assuming my wife could comment better than I could on how it is during the week. But on the weekends, it's, it's bad. Coming over the crest is especially very daylight hours a crap shoot. At night, if a lot of people have their headlights on usually, so you might have a better fighting chance. But, and you know, and also even when you come in off of, you know, Scotch Town, you hang it right into there. It's kind of a blind right-hand turn, so if there are cars parked closer to the corner there, that presents an issue too.
Trustee Matthews wasn't feeling well tonight, so she couldn't be here. What she conveyed to me in her email was she wanted to find out about the entrance to Harness Estates when the second road could be opened. But she also was more in favor of just during school hours, having the restrictions, not weekends. So, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I, um, you know, after we had the meeting, I've traveled that street several times and kind of did a little assessment. I also have several bus drivers that come into Elsie's that consume breakfast there on a regular basis. And I asked them about it and they really indicated that it was a severe problem to them as far as maneuvering their buses through there.
With the crest or the whole way?
Uh, the whole street itself, just with cars parked on both sides of the street. Another car coming the other way. You got, they said that you have a lot of parents that'll go up and they'll do like a U-turn in the beginning of Harness Estates there. They'll go in there and then they'll turn around and they'll come back down the hill and they'll boot their kids out there and let them walk around to the school. And so, he said, so then you've got two-way traffic coming in the morning with cars parked on the other side of the street. And you're trying to do the bus. And then he said, not he, there was a couple of bus drivers, they all kind of chimed in together. And they said, one of the biggest things is, is it hinders the time factor of getting the kids to school at a reasonable time. Getting them off the buses, download it so that they can get into their classrooms and stuff. Because the way the, the buses work is, is all buses got to be on site before they start downloading kids. Because they just don't want to have one bus of kids come out and then the bus takes off, this and that. So, they all park up there and then they massively download them. And then the folks guide them in different directions and herd them alone, you know. And, uh, so he says, you know, you could get stuck on that road or even trying to turn in there, you know, and, and get up the road. He said, that, just that piece alone there could set you back seven or eight minutes just getting up there. Then, just in my observations and driving the road up there, um, the crest of the hill, I would say is probably a significant problem. And I would say, having driven a bus before, having a CDL license and everything, if you're maneuvering a larger vehicle up there, it would be a very, it would be a hazard. Plus, as Ed said, it is somewhat, if there's vehicles parked on the right side, it's a crap shoot when you get up to top that hill because you don't see until you get up there. Now, with that in mind, going back to what Ed said about the, there's, it seems like on weekends or whatever, there's a lot of traffic up there. There's a lot of traffic, but there's not, you know, a fifty-two foot bus going through there. You know, not thirty or forty of them going through in a pop with six hundred kids on there. And I think that we would be probably borderline derelict if we didn't take that into consideration if this is the school that sent us this. Now, if it was a resident and, you know, the majority of the people in the neighborhood were not in favor of having the no parking there. I understand there are things, it kind of takes away some of their rights. But I think for the safety factor that the school has brought to our attention and asked us to consider this, I'd say we have really no choice, at least as a minimum, which I'd be in favor of, is during school hours, when the buses travel through there, that there's no parking on, on that side of the street, so.
It'd be interesting, I would wonder if it was during school hours that people would get in the habit of parking on the other side during the week and that would translate to on the weekends as well. I don't know if it would, or... I guess the concern that someone has is if we just did during the week, it might be confusing. If it's a Friday, then you can't park there, Saturday you can.
Well, I think if the signs read something to the, to the effects of Monday through Friday or during school hours only, no parking during school hours from, during school, school days or school hours. Because I think there are a couple of signs around the village similar to that.
Okay.
I don't know, but it's, and it says like from seven or whatever, six forty, six thirty, six AM till four PM or something like that.
Right.
I think that would have to be that. And then I think, I mean, you know, it, uh, it, it still gives the people their other use. I mean, in the evening, they can park their cars out there. On the weekends, they can park their cars out there. On holidays, they can park their car there when school's not in session. All summer long, they can park up there, you know, that kind of thing.
I mean, I know schools have brought this to us, but I mean, I can tell you, you know, roughly a hundred houses. I mean, you've got hundreds of cars coming out of Harness a day, in and out. And it is dangerous. You know, I know there are many people that never wanted that road to be open. But the reality is, that's been going on for six years. And I don't see it being closed, would want it, opposed to being closed ever. But even if there were some mechanism that we're supposed to close eventually, God knows what that might be, that another house will be built there anytime soon with a trigger, something like that.
Could there be a compromise where during the week, during school hours, it's no parking, but a certain section where that crest is, that's no parking twenty-four seven? I don't know if that muddies the water too much and sends mixed messages, but...
Well, then where does it start, where does it stop, and how do you enforce it?
Well, then I think you get other people saying, well, I can't park in front of my house. They can park in front of theirs. I think it has to be the whole strip up. Just me personally. And then, like I said, I mean, you know, we said, it's never, like you said, it's never been a problem before. And we don't want it ever to be a problem, you know. And, uh, you know, so you turn around and, and something becomes a problem. Somebody's car gets side swiped or somebody gets hit or something like that, and then it becomes a problem.
I mean, I think at the minimum, we need to do something in terms of that blind spot on the hill.
Cause you're always going to force the problem in terms of where does it stop, where does it start.
Right, and now, on my perspective, I didn't, I only just asked a couple of bus drivers that I know that come into the diner. But, you know, maybe some research has to be done. And like I said, they all indicated that it was an issue. And, but none of us, I don't know if anybody talked to the superintendent from the garage there or something, you know, other than just the letter that we saw from them saying that it's a safety issue and we'll reconsider. Maybe, I mean, you know, but I mean, what I'm saying is, if you poll sixty bus drivers that are ferrying our kids to school every day and fifty of them say, I have a problem with manipulating my bus through there, I think you have to take action.
True.
You know.
Well, I mean, it is a risk question, we do it other places, it's real simple. You just put no parking between signs, we have that all over the village.
Yeah.
Well, so maybe we can do some research and, one, find out how much we can have on a sign. Find some of those signs and say, Monday through Friday, school hours. See the size of those, if it's something that's, you know, easily to decipher. Find out the logistics of doing it during a property section, if, you know, what it would be from property A to property B, no parking twenty-four seven. And make an interpretation from there. Because I think we still, as a board, have some questions at this point. Unless any, you know, I'm open to other thoughts, though.
My only contention would be that we have to, there has to be some, something done as far as the parking goes, just based on that. And maybe, like I said, more research is necessary. But whatever we do, we can't delay it for any significant amount of time. We have to kind of come to some kind of conclusion and get the ball rolling. It's be within reasonable time.
Sure, yeah, because I think, based on the conversation you had about the school buses and the letter, you know, there's an issue there. But I think Ed's point is now too, about weekends, there's extensive traffic as well. So, you know, if we prevent something from happening during the week, and something happens on the weekend, we're still, you know, we were still informed of the challenge there, isn't that the spot, so.
Well, I mean, it seemed to me the biggest concern that the residents had there, which was, it wasn't daytime parking because ironically, Ed, if you go up that, your street at like nine-thirty, ten o'clock in the morning, there aren't any cars parked on the street.
I would put it here, it's actually worse than heat than it is during the day.
But if you go up there at seven o'clock in the morning, seven-thirty in the morning, just cars parked on all sides of the street. And it's pretty evident that it's people that, you know, they leave to go off to work or whatever and then they do it. But if they're in that window of time where it's, it's hindrance to the bus, to the buses. And so, but like I said, if you probably drove through there right now, there would probably be a significant amount of cars on both sides of the street. But if you went through there at ten o'clock in the morning, there won't be any.
Yeah, that's a little weird, you know.
How's the lighting there? And like, if you drive, is it well lit on that street tonight? I've driven through it, you know, a hundred times.
What, thousands of times, I don't know, and I, I want to tell you, yes, but I...
Right.
I'll keep an eye on it tonight, you know, you just drive some...
I'll just be curious, because...
But you just, after a while, you know.
If it's already one of the, not extremely well lit, and we have that issue?
I think it's decently lit.
Okay.
I don't think lighting's a problem.
Now, did we ever address any of this with Chief Watt?
Yeah, his input would be twenty-four seven.
Good.
Yeah.
Good. I mean, I think that's another factor you have to take into consideration. I mean, you know, obviously, my field of expertise is not analyzing traffic or anything.
I think he even wrote that on a little memo that the school...
He's can read that to me, twenty first time.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, I think stuff like that, you got to take into, you know, we have to take into consideration based on, you know, people who this is more their forte.
He's our public safety guy.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe if I'm reading the board right, do a little more investigation and talk. Our next work session about this?
I think we'll agree something needs to be done, it's the one lot.
Right, right, so, okay. Any further comments on this? Okay, very good. Two more things, um, we have a letter from Assemblywoman Rabbit. Basically, I guess the owner of Village Pizza, Mr. Brancato, is hoping to get a fifteen-minute parking spot outside of Village Pizza in the Assemblywoman's apartment.
I would support it, too. I'm there every Friday night getting a pizza.
We even have it at fifteen minutes, we have a couple of nights.
Not in that way, not in that way. Every, every, say, block that has businesses on there throughout the village has, that particular block doesn't have one.
Yeah, people are in and out.
Okay, and, uh, but like across the street, just up the street, like where the beverage store is, there's a fifteen-minute parking time there.
Yeah.
And I think when you're talking about somebody who this is impeding is, it's a, it's not an asset to his business where somebody can come park their car there and leave it for a couple hours and it kind of blocks access to people coming in there to just try to pick up a pizza or whatever.
Then they'll keep driving over somewhere else.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we've got, you know, I think that makes a lot of sense. Because we've got them in front of all kinds of places like that, and a liquor store. You know, different places where people are just popping in and out. Very, you know, the place isn't that big.
There's one on the corner by you.
There's one in front of Elsie's, there's one across the street from Elsie's. There's one in front of the liquor store, there's one by the, across the street from Baxter's.
There's one by Baxter's.
There's one up by the gourmet bakery, there's one in front of, uh... There's one up by the, the gourmet bakery, there's one in front of, uh.
Howells.
There's one over by, uh, the barber shop.
Yeah.
Uh, across the intersection, and there's one across the street from that. So, maybe somehow people just kind of bypass that, because in front of the beverage store, there's one, and then there's another one across the street from the beverage store, I believe, in front of, uh, the trophy shop and all that stuff.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that one.
But there are all. But, you know, that, to me, it's, it's, it's kind of like a no-brainer that there should be one there, because there's even next to Sal's Pizzeria is the, uh, there's a, the, the mechanic, so if somebody wants to stop to run in and check on their car or something, we come back down, you know, you have fifteen minutes.
Okay, so it seems like the board's in favor of this?
Yeah.
All right, thanks, so the public meeting on Monday, we can put a resolution together. I'll talk to David tomorrow about putting something on there, but we'll put that on the agenda to, um, schedule a public hearing on this. All right, and the last, I just want to get us back on track with some of the zoning issues that have been hanging out for over two years now, frankly. Um, two biggest things that we have is, uh, places of worship and the Greenwich Avenue zoning. And quickly, just, we don't have to take any action on this tonight, this is just to restart the conversation, and subsequently, if the board wants, we can get our planners to turn in here at a work session, and hopefully after that, take some actions, because we've spent a lot of time and energy and village funds on putting these studies together, I think we need to come to some kind of conclusion. Um, the places of worship law basically says that we allow places of worship everywhere in the village except in the immediate downtown vicinity, and the rationale for that is if you have a place of worship, you can't have anywhere that sells liquor within, I guess, a hundred or two hundred feet, I don't know if you guys remember the exact number, um, but the challenge, we talked about is if a place, a place of worship opened up downtown somewhere, then no new restaurants could open up and get liquor licensed subsequently, and restaurants thrive downtown. So, that was the thinking there. Um, the way it's written now, with being laid out basically like that, I'm comfortable with, um, but I'm not sure if there, there's any other thoughts or questions that we want to get Stu Turner in here for. And a lot of this, we haven't discussed, and you've been on the board, so.
No, I know, but I have some kind of insight to it, um, and, you know, my question, how did things come, come to play before, I mean, did they get variance to the laws before?
Not, I'm not sure, well, I think that the village didn't really have any coherent strategy on places of worship prior. This is more to define it, um, because, and bring Stu, it'll be helpful, because there's basically a law that says you can't restrict places of worship.
Right.
Um, so I think this would show that we're not restricting places of worship just for economic reasons, just not in that one area. Um, do you guys have anything there?
Well, the only thing I would say is that we've put a lot of time and effort into this, and then it kind of got off track. Um, I think there was a real clear focus on where we were going with the, the places of worship law, but we had a lot of discussion, and we had a lot of people here, we had a lot of the business people from Greenwich Avenue, and we had some real serious discussions and some real, uh, issues, I think, about that, so I'm going to go back and look at, look at that. I mean, we're talking about an awful lot of, a lot of what different people thought we may or may not want to do, there was input from the planning board, uh, you recall, I mean, that's one of the things that generated this, is they were concerned about the, you know, some of the setbacks and some of the amenities of, you know, the buildings that were there, where there were some of us that were really concerned about any kind of hindrance to the, that, that property, those properties there are very difficult to market as it is. I'm very concerned about anything that's going to impede the ability of people to try and market those properties.
I agree, I think that, I'd like to expand the uses there to make it so it's more marketable for people. Um, and a lot of that stuff is covered in the, um, what they put together for Greenwich, but one thing that came to us kind of last minute, and we never really discussed in detail, is potential residential on the second floor, because I forget who mentioned it, but someone was talking about, you know, a lot of the properties, I deal that have a business downstairs and residential upstairs, and I think that's what a lot of the business owners were looking for there, to make their property more marketable. Um, so I think that's, I, I could potentially be in favor of, but we, I think, as a board, we need to discuss it in more detail.
Yeah, and I mean, one of the things that's clear is where is, uh, as far as, you know, traditional commercial space goes, we can't give it away in this village. I mean, I understand, these two buildings up here in Matthew Street were virtually empty until the, you know, took it all over in the last couple of weeks, so I think you have to give people some options.
Right, and a lot of places where, where storefronts and businesses downstairs can be unfortunately transient at times, sometimes those upstairs apartments are the anchors for the property, that keep generating revenue for the property owners. So, if the board's in favor, I'll ask Stu Turner to come do a, a work session in the future, just so we can come to a conclusion on this stuff and get it done. You know, there's a lot of work and time that's been spent on this, and, and I think for Greenwich Avenue, a lot of the property owners are waiting on us to give some direction on what's going to be the case, because they're marketing their properties, or some of them at least, and not knowing what the final zoning is going to be, what their options are, isn't helping them with that.
So, what you're talking about is to actually come up with and approve some kind of a zoning period for that section.
Well, the way the genesis for us talking about Greenwich Avenue was, we took that central corridor of downtown, on West Main Street.
Right.
And that was the same zone as Greenwich Avenue, it was all one big piece.
Right.
So, we said, all right, if we're going to approve the places of worship law and restrict zoning in that downtown one corridor, let's split it and allow it in Greenwich Avenue to show that we're not being overly restrictive.
Right.